Good evening and welcome to the January 3, 2017, meeting of City Council. It will now come to order. We'll have the invocation given by Steve Faber from our Parks Department. And please remain standing then for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, be kind before you and grateful for the love that you share and shower upon us. Father, it's a new year, and so it's a new beginning. And we realize that there are a lot of new beginnings. But this is one that we mark, and it's monumental in a sense. So we ask that as we reorganize tonight, that your blessing would be upon the decisions that have been made, that the people who are tapped to serve would be willing to do it and do it in a fair, just way. Thank you for these folks who are willing to step up and be part of this city government. We pray for the citizens, that they might be proud of the people that they have chosen. We pray, Father, that you would continue to watch over and keep us all safe. We pray for the sick, that they would know healing. We pray for those who agree, that they would know comfort. Thank you, Father, for your friendship, and thank you for being our father. Thank you for your love that never ends. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This being the first meeting of the year, it's not only the regular council meeting, but it's also the organizational meeting also. First order of business will be the appointment of the pro temp clerk. Do I have a nomination for that? Mr. Whitehill?
I would appoint Mr. Gall.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gall, if you'd call the roll on that, please.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
President.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall, yes. Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Here.
I'll vote in favor, sir.
Very good. Mr. Gall, if you would go ahead and call the roll for attendance, please.
Mr. Brown?
President.
Mrs. Dickey?
Here.
Mr. Knoll?
President.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Here.
Mr. Whitehill?
Here.
Mr. Gall?
Present, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Next matter of business is the adoption of council rules for this year. Everybody had a copy that was placed in their area beforehand. Do I have a motion to adopt the rules governing council?
Are there any changes, Mr. President?
The only thing that was in there was the one dealing with change we made during the year.
Thank you.
All right. Moving then, Mr. Brown, to adopt those?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Knoll? Mr. Gall, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gall? On the firm, sir.
Thank you. Next is the nomination of a candidate for clerk of council. Do I have a nomination for that position? Mr. Whitehill?
I don't have Mrs. Booker.
All right. Is there a second on that? Mr. Brown? Mr. Gall, if you'd please call the roll.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gall? On the firm, sir.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, if you would go ahead and administer the oath to Mrs. Booker, please.
Peter, me, I, in name.
I, Debbie Booker.
Do hereby swear or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The laws.
Of the laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the ordinances.
Ordnances.
Of the city of Salem, Ohio.
City of Salem, Ohio.
I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge and perform my duties as council clerk of the city of Salem according to the best of my ability and understanding.
Next, we'll move to the appointment of president pro temp. Is there any nominations?
I don't have Brian Whitehill.
Thank you. Mr. Knoll, is there a second on that? Mrs. Dickey? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, everybody's received a copy of the minutes from our last meeting in December. Are there any corrections, deletions to those minutes or additions? Seeing none, they'll stand as approved. The committee appointments for 2017, I'll just briefly go over those. For finance and appropriations, Mr. Whitehill will be the chairperson. Mr. Knoll and Mr. Gall will be on that committee. Utilities, Mr. Gall will remain as chairman. Mrs. Dickey and whoever the lucky person is that council eventually appoints will be on that committee also. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Paparrotis will chair that. Mr. Knoll and Mr. Brown will be on that. Economic Development, Mr. Knoll will be the chairperson. Mr. Paparrotis and Mr. Whitehill will also serve on that. Streets, alleys, and sidewalks, Mr. Brown will again chair that. Mr. Paparrotis, and again, the person to be named. And traffic and safety, the person to be named will be the chairperson. Mrs. Dickey and Mr. Whitehill will be on that also. Rules and ordinance, Mrs. Dickey will chair that. Mr. Brown and Mr. Gall will again serve on that. Committee of the whole will be Mr. Whitehill as the president pro temp. We know the clerk pro temp is going to be Mr. Gall. The liaisons for Prairie Township will be Mr. Brown. For Sadic, Mr. Knoll. For the Historical Preservation Society, Mr. Gall. For the Tourism Board, Mr. Paparrotis. Shade Tree Commission, Mr. Whitehill. Design Review Board, Mrs. Dickey. And whoever is named will then serve as the school liaison. There are no petitions and remonstrances this evening. Also, we did not have anybody sign up for the receiving of visitors. Move then to report of city officials. Mayor Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to see you, Councilman Brown.
Nice to see you, Dan.
I hope everyone had a nice holiday and New Year's. At this time, I have appointments that I would like to announce for various boards and commissions in the city of Salem. The first group that I will be reading will be ones that are appointed by the mayor but do not require council confirmation. For the Board of Health, as a district licensing council member, I'm reappointing Scott Dupung to a five-year term ending January 18, 2022. For the Board of Housing Appeals, I'm reappointing Patty Colian to a three-year term ending December 31, 2019. To the Civil Service Commission, I'm reappointing Gary Dean to a six-year term ending December 31, 2022. To the Parks Commission, I'm reappointing Terry Hoops to a three-year term ending December 31, 2019. And to the Planning Commission, I'm reappointing both Frank Zamorelli and Robert Mary to six-year terms ending December 31, 2022. The following three boards or commissions are appointed by the mayor and require council confirmation. I have three. Shall I read all three at once for confirmation or individually?
Just one at a time, please.
To the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm reappointing Dan Bricker to a four-year term ending March 31, 2020, and require council confirmation.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
You have to have someone move forward. All right.
I move.
Move. Is there a second then? Mrs. Dickey? Now, if you'd read the roll, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right.
To the Design Review Board, I have three appointees that require council confirmation. Shall I read each one individually?
Attorney Zellers, since it's one board?
It's one board, and they could be presented as a slate, I believe.
All right.
Okay. The slate for the Design Review Board consists of Margaret Winch, Mike Mancuso, and Sharon Parrish, all being reappointed to three-year terms, which end December 31, 2019. I would require council confirmation for those three individuals.
Mrs. Dickey, so moves. Is there a second? Mr. Gall? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
And finally, tonight, the Utilities Commission, I'm reappointing Tim Weingart to a six-year term, which will end December 31, 2022, and I'll require council confirmation.
Mr. Gall, so moves. Is there a second? Mrs. Dickey? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council, that concludes my report, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that someone may have.
Any questions? Mr. Gall?
Mr. Mayor, since Mr. Kentsen isn't here, do we know where we are on the demolition of the household of Mr. Kentsen? I looked earlier, didn't see him. I apologize. I'll wait for Mr. Kentsen. Excuse me.
Any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none, thank you. Law Director, Attorney Zellers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no formal report, but I'd like to congratulate everybody on their new appointments. And certainly, welcome back, Mr. Brown. Happy to see him here and doing well. And to Mr. Nestic, if you're watching out there, lucky guy. That's all I have.
Any questions for Attorney Zellers? Mr. Gall?
On Mr. Nestic's behalf, I did send you an email and ask you to take a look at what our requirements are, timeframe to put the issue of the charter commission back onto the ballot, and what is our timeframe?
Mr. Gall, I'm not aware that there's anything that would prohibit it from coming back at the next election, or any time, any other time for that matter.
But there is a timeframe that we must pass so it can be put on the ballot, correct?
That is correct.
90 days?
I believe so. The last time it was 90 days. So we were looking at Ms. Colian.
I was looking for the date.
I believe it was, Mr. Gall.
Petitions are due in February. That's all I can think of.
And it may coincide with that.
Maybe if the next council meeting, we can get a firm date when we have to act if we wish to do such.
I'll provide you with one at that time. Mr. Gall, if not before, I'll respond to your email and also let you know.
Any other questions for Attorney Zellers? Seeing none, thank you. The auditor, Mrs. Brothers, advised me before the meeting that she has no formal report, but will be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Seeing none, thank you. Treasure, Dr. Conrad.
I have no report, Mr. President. No report.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Conrad? Seeing none, thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Kents.
Mr. President, I have no report. I can't answer questions.
If you go ahead up to the podium, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't see you come in, and I do apologize. I know we were waiting to hear from the land bank on the property on Wilson Street on the demolition issue that they own, and I think we were told that they were waiting to have, listen, a minimum of five properties before they would act to demolish that I saw that's sitting down there.
I have no information on that. The mayor's on the land bank committee. He may know more than I do.
I want to ask the right person to start with, didn't I? I have contacted the land bank regarding the demolition of those homes, and they're telling me that they're assembling the data necessary to do the bidding. The last time I spoke to Ted Harrell, he said it was going to be taken care of as soon as possible. That's the only information that I currently have. I could make another call tomorrow and find out exactly. The house on Wilson though was on that specific list, correct? Yes, there are. Couple others besides, but that in particular. Correct. Yeah. I can follow up and ask again what the timetable is.
Thank you, Mr. Kents.
Any other questions for Mr. Kents? Seeing none, thank you.
Chairman, members of council, honorable mayor. The Utilities Commission will meet January 12. Will have two meetings that day, one at 2:30. That will be to discuss the Burgess Michael study that is being completed for Phase Two of the WASH water treatment plant. So it will be at 2:30. The second meeting, which will be the regular meeting, will be at 4:00 p.m. And also the bids for the San Jacque Stewart Extension on Cunningham North will be opened on January 26th. They're being advertised this week for 635 feet of San Jacque Stewart extension. That's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Weingart? Mr. Gall?
I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, Mr. Weingart, have we sent out for bid for the sludge removal for the second time yet?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Oh, yes. They're open on 29th of December. We did receive one bid. And the decision of that bid will be made on the 12th of January.
But you did get a response. This time, you got a response. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Parks Director, Mr. Faber.
Mr. President, I have, excuse me, no report this evening, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Faber? Seeing none, thank you. Council Clerk, Mrs. Booker.
Thank you. I have nothing.
All right. That concludes the report of city officials. Move on to report of standing committees. I know that they had placed Mr. Whitehill as the chairperson of finance, but Mr. Knoll, is there anything to report?
Yeah, we had our last meeting. I do have ordinance for second reading tonight, number one, for all three reasons.
All right. And that will be the new ordinance, that will be dash one. That's a resolution to accept a donation to the city from the commissioners for their donation of $20,000 to help defray the cost of police officers. Streets, alleys, and sidewalks, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee has not met, however, it's my understanding that the qualifications from contractors and the payment contract meter have already finalized. You've already received all those?
Yes. As a matter of fact, Councilman Brown, we, on December 30th, had received a total of four qualification packets from various engineering groups, and we are scheduling a meeting within the next week to review the scoring sheets and then do the evaluation subsequent to that.
Would you do me a favor, sir? I need to change protocol here or procedure, but you notify me when you have those results and we can meet and discuss.
All, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Utilities, Mr. Gall?
The Utilities Committee has not met, but we do have an ordinance we'd like to submit tonight.
All right. That will be dash two, and that's the amending of Section 157.02 of Chapter 157 regarding powers and duties of Salem Utilities Commission. Traffic and safety, Mr. Whitehill, I'll look to you for that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do also show an ordinance tonight as well. I'm assuming that's three then?
That is correct. And that's authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the ODOT for the purpose of resurfacing U.S. Route 62 within the corporation limits.
We do have a pending issue brought forth by the fire department in regards to ambulance service in the community, so I was originally going to schedule a meeting. We have a new chair coming in. We'll have to make a decision if we appoint that person soon, then we can wait. If not, then it's possible that Mrs. Dickey and I may go ahead and have that meeting as a two-person committee to move it forward.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Rules and ordinances, Mrs. Dickey?
My committee has not met during the holidays, so we are going to be setting everything towards the end of the month. I just don't have a date yet.
Very good. Parks, Mr. Paparrotis?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee did not meet. I had no report.
All right. Economic Development, Mr. Knoll?
I have no report.
All right. Very good. Committee of the whole, Mr. Whitehill?
Committee has not met. There is no report.
All right. Very good. That concludes the report of standing committees. Move on then to second and third reading of ordinances and resolutions. And do you have those, Mr. Zellers? All right. Number 69, Mr. Knoll?
Mr. President, I move that the clerk read ordinance number 161220-69. By title, only for a second reading.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance 69 for its second reading this evening?
Being an ordinance to supersede ordinance 161101-59, establishing and adjusting salaries, wages, and other benefits for nonrepresented city employees and nonrepresented city and elected officials of the city of Salem, repealing all prior inconsistent ordinances herewith and declaring an emergency.
All right. And next, Mrs. Dickey.
I would like to ask that you ask the clerk to read ordinance 70 for its third reading tonight for passage.
We'll only have one reading on that.
Okay. For its second and third reading tonight?
Moving to suspend statutory rules then?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second on that? Mr. Knoll? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on that?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right. Statutory rules are suspended. Mrs. Dickey?
Mr. President, please ask the clerk to read ordinance 70 for second and third reading for passage.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance number 70 for its second and third readings for passage this evening?
Being an ordinance creating and adopting Chapter 1187 of Title VII, Part 11 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Salem regarding vacant structure registration.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance number 70 for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
All right. That concludes the second and third reading of ordinances and resolutions. We'll move on to the introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Knoll?
Mr. President, I move that council suspend council rules for that ordinance number 170103-01. Can you consider it tonight?
All right. And is there a second on that? Mr. Gall? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. Council rules are suspended. Mr. Knoll, I know that Mrs. Brothers brought to my attention, Mrs. Brothers, I'll just let you explain that as to why you're asking the emergency clause be added to that.
Thank you. We received the letter from the commissioners. They asked that the resolution be passed and sent to them later than February 1st.
All right. So with that, I take it, can I have a motion then to add that on? All right. Second on that, Mr. Whitehill? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Knoll?
Mr. President, I move that the clerk read ordinance number 170103-01 by title only for its first, second, and third reading with emergency clause. Sorry. It's going to back up. By title only.
With this, and I got you off track when I did the other, do you want to suspend the statutory rules to?
That's all.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second on that? Mr. Whitehill? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparrotis?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Knoll?
Mr. President, I move that the clerk read ordinance number 170103-01 by title only for its first, second, and third reading with the emergency clause for passage.
Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number One for its first, second, and third readings this evening with the emergency clause?
Being a resolution to accept a donation to the city of Salem from the Columbia County Commissioners and to express appreciation for their generous donation of $20,000 for the purposes of defraying cost of police officers assigned on a part-time or full-time basis to the Columbia County Drug Task Force and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution Number One for passage this evening?
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
All right, passes 70. Mr. Gall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we suspend statutory rules for the ordinance 170103-2. May we see three readings for passage to?
All right, is there a second on that? Mr. Brown? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
No.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right, statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Gall?
Thank you, sir. I do move that.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. Forgot we don't have Mr. Nestic. No, those aren't.
May I ask then that the, we can ask for the first reading, can we not?
Yes.
Before I have to suspend council rules for first reading?
No.
No?
You can just ask for?
First reading of ordinance 17013-2, please.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance number two for its first reading this evening?
Being an ordinance amending Section 157.02 of Chapter 157 of Title V, Part 1 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Salem regarding powers and duties of the Salem Utilities Commission.
All right, Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend council rules for the ordinance three. Can be considered tonight?
Is there a second on that? Mr. Noel? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right, council rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend statutory rules so that ordinance three can be given its first, second, and third reading this evening.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Paparides? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the clerk read ordinance three by title only for its first, second, and third reading this evening with the emergency clause.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance number three by title only for its first, second, and third readings this evening with the emergency clause?
Being an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purpose of resurfacing U.S. Route 62 within the corporation limits of the city of Salem, Columbia County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance number three for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
That passes 60. That concludes the introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Move on then to the pleasure of council. Mr. Noel?
I just like to welcome Mr. Brown back, glad to see you back in good health, and wish everybody a happy new year.
Mrs. Dickey?
I want to tell everybody Happy New Year, and I also want to remind you that cold weather is upon us. Be careful what you're driving, and remember, your sidewalks are your responsibility. Please shuffle down.
Mr. Paparides?
Just wishing everyone a Happy New Year, and that's all.
Mr. Gall?
I'd like to commend Mrs. Dickey, if I may. The ordinance that was passed tonight under her guidance on the vacant property ordinances is one that everybody in the city should be made aware of and recognize. The purpose is to, I don't want to say point the finger, yeah, to point the finger at the individuals that own the property that do absolutely nothing about it and just let it sit vacant. And this is a tremendous tool. And on the other side, it is a burden on anybody that owns the building if they just follow the rules.